Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of April 5th, 2021. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chambers by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue, not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
If you still wish to appear in person on an item on the agenda, you may come to the County City Building at 555 South 10th Street. Limited seating is available in the council chambers. Testifiers are asked to wait in the bill expert's studio or in the hallway until your item is called. Then you can enter the council chambers and come to the podium. After you're finishing speaking, you can exit the chambers through the door to your immediate left. Our first items on the agenda is Sections 1 and 2.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on the consent agenda, Items 1 or Anyone like to speak on Items 1 or 2? Okay, thank you so much. Sony, will you please read the first item?
Item 1A is approving a professional services agreement supplement number 1 between the city and Felsberg Holt in Yuleveg for Cotner Boulevard and Adams Street Traffic Signal Replacement Project, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Christensen. May we please have a roll call vote?
Ward?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 1B is resolution setting the interest rate and levying the assessments of the Board of Equalization held Monday, March 29th, 2021, for Saunders Avenue Special Assessment Repaving District #159, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Ward, seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 1C is resolution setting the interest rate and levying the assessments of the Board of Equalization held Monday, March 29th, 2021, for Cornoscar Highway and Fletcher Avenue Special Assessment sewer district #1189, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Christensen. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 1D is resolution setting the interest rate and levying the assessments of the Board of Equalization held Monday, March 29th, 2021, for Greenwood Street Special Assessment Water District 1210, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 1E is resolution setting the interest rate and levying the assessments of Board of Equalization held Monday, March 29th, 2021, for South 16th Street to South 17th Street between E and F Streets, Special Assessment Alley Repaving District #52, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced and moved and seconded by Councilman Christensen. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Christensen?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 2A is setting the hearing date, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. That concludes our consent agenda. We'll move on to Section 4, our public hearing liquor resolution. Item 4A is application of blur parties, including business as blur parties for special designated license to cover an indoor area measuring approximately 270 feet by 235 feet at 345 Speedway Circle on April 17th, 2021 through April 18th, 2021, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.
Is there anyone here that would like to introduce this or speak on it?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of Item 4A.
Second.
Moved by, introduced by Councilman Christensen, seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Washington.
This application came forward to us without the typical cover letter from the Lincoln Police Department, and I'm curious if we have a cover letter explaining LPD's position on their review of this?
Investigator Parker.
Hello, Scott Parker, Lincoln Police Department. On this one, just because it was an SDL, we don't typically provide the cover letter.
Oh, so you don't do that at all?
Correct, yeah. We just review, make sure that the liquor license is good, they're up with training, and then it goes around to the other city entities for approval.
Is this the one where the training was in 1972?
I would have to review the file again.
And I was like, that's a long time ago.
Right.
Okay.
I don't think the city had a training requirement in 1972.
No, I don't believe so.
Seventy-six, thank you. It was liquor management training, 1976, and I just...
Wow.
Okay.
So I would have to review the file again to ensure, but I know that there's been some conversation back and forth with our legal advisor, and they finally looped me in with this too, because they have some other things going on as well. But I do know that Blur Parties historically does do a few SDLs per year, historically speaking.
Okay.
So, but I can review it and get back to you and certainly let you know.
No, I think I'm gonna just ask the applicant a couple of questions.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Any further conversation or any further discussion?
I do have a question for the applicant, if the applicant's here.
Is the applicant here?
Okay. All right, thank you.
We had it moved and we had it seconded, had some discussion. Any further comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, may we please move to a roll call vote?
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Our next section is Section 5, Public Hearing Resolutions. Item 5A is special permit 450S, application of Madonna Rehabilitation Hospital to amend their campus signage plan for new signage to include electronic changeable copy signage with front yard setback reduction for signage on property generally located at 5401 South Street.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, my name is Tom Houston. My address is 233 South 13th Street, Suite 1900, here in Lincoln. Appearing before you today on behalf of Madonna Rehabilitation Hospital, located at 54th and South Street. In March of 2020, I was in before this body, and the City Council approved a special permit amendment to the non-residential health care facility, special permit that exists from the Madonna campus between 56th and 52nd and south of South Street in the city of Lincoln, that special permit amendment authorized a three-story expansion for new patient rooms on the east side of the existing campus, a new front entrance for the building, improved parking lot and traffic circulation, and new entrances with the consolidation of two entrances on South Street and another new entrance on 56th Street. Construction is proceeding, obviously, in the last year. A lot of progress has been made. It is anticipated that the new entrance will become operable in December of 2021. The new patient rooms will become occupied in approximately April, approximately a year from now, in 2022, and that the entire project should hit the finish line in early winter of 2023. The item that is on your agenda today is just one of the details that we're trying to accommodate this new expansion, that the Item 5A, Bill 21R-114, would amend the special permit to amend the south, the site plan to allow a new entrance sign, which is an electronic changeable copy sign, to provide public information on campus activities and improve wayfinding within the area. The existing code does not permit it, and you'll see another item on your agenda, Item 6A, that is related to this item, that really deals with a text amendment. But the intent of this, and I wanted to show the site plan, the new electronic changeable copy sign is being located adjacent to the South Street new entrance, where the two entrances are being consolidated, to help orient people as they enter the new Madonna campus. And with that, be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Houston? Councilman Christensen?
So, do we know when they're gonna be completed with all these changes and renovations?
Yeah, we anticipate the patients will start occupying the new patient rooms about a year from now, and then full completion, hopefully ribbon cutting soon thereafter, but the contract should be fully completed by probably early winter 2023.
I've got one more follow-up question. And you might not know this, or if you do, great. If you don't, put a bug in the ear of the right people, please. Will Sister Phyllis Hunhoff be invited to participate in that?
I'm certain she will.
Good.
Yeah. I didn't even have to ask that question. I know she will. Yes.
Any further questions for Mr. Houston? Councilwoman Washington?
I do, because it's a moving sign, a motion sign. The neighbors across the street, directly across, those are businesses?
Yeah, there's a multi-level office building and some additional small soft office uses across the street. I did receive one inquiry, because the letter went out to all the neighbors, and I received an inquiry from a neighbor that lives, has a home down at 54th and Normal, on the south side of the campus. And so I provided her the site plan, explained what was going on. She was fully satisfied with the explanation, said she had no objection. Mrs. Antrim.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, I was interested in sort of like what the sightlines were, but if that's the only location, then...
The special permit does seek a small waiver of the front yard requirement, just to put the sign a little bit closer to the street for wayfinding purposes.
Yeah, no, sounds good, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Houston? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on this item? Anyone else that would wish to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to the next item, please.
Item 5B, Special Permit 21010, application of Chad Burr Construction LLC, to allow for a community unit planned with build-through to development to dwelling units with associated waivers on property generally located at 5100 South 98th Street.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group, here today on behalf of Chad Burr Construction. This project is one that is before you for, because of a number of waivers to design standards, and essentially what we've done is worked with the planning department, and I'm very grateful for their willingness to work with us on this. This was a 40-acre parcel. It's at 98th between Evandorn and Pioneers, and so it's in Tier 2, or A2 of the comprehensive plan. And so, city utilities will be ready in this area in probably a 20-year period. And essentially, there's an existing house on the property, on the 40 acres, and it was configured into some 20-acre parcels that didn't meet the new standards for frontage. So we've redone that, and then this is the CUP to overlay on the top of that, that would allow another parcel with the one-per-20-acre requirements. But in essence, what it does is, it does not ask them to put in a county road today to serve these two lots that can share a driveway access onto 98th Street, but puts all the conditions and the location of that future road in place with the CUP. And so that is the gist of it. Again, I think planning for working with us on this, in saving these people, you know, what could have been, because of the distance, the existing house is back from 98th, probably $100,000 road. And so, but we've done their build-through requirements, we showed how the urban layout would work, and we have created a no-build area for that future roadway. And in the interim, they can use their existing access to 98th, they have to relinquish that, and the Burr family will retain the outlots. And this is what they wanted too, they wanted this land for future development many years down the road. So, with that, if you have any questions, I've got some exhibits too, if you have any questions. Be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions? Councilwoman Washington?
I noticed there were some folks who were concerned about the project, a development just south of you. Could you talk a little bit about how you resolved those issues?
I think that was, by and large, a council person, Washington, a misunderstanding. And if this comes up, there we go. So yes, it was the Drew Lamley's family here, that this is an extension of Highmark Golf Course, and they were objecting to us tying into the road right here, because there was a small gap that would have gone through their property. They misunderstood that that would, as I just explained, this blue road only happens under annexation. And so now, in the interim, they get to use, what I've drawn in pink there, is the driveway out to 98th, so they won't have to access it. When this property undergoes annexation, it's likely that the Lamley property would too, and then, as we all know, we connect to roads, because this will be the future designated quarter-mile access point per the access management policy. So, they thought we were building the blue road day one, and that's what a series of our waivers are, to build the blue road in the future and keep the pink driveway in use now.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Item 5C is appeal by Richard Bradley and Roberta Bradley of Planning Commission Approval of Waiver 21001, to waive the 3-to-1 width-to-death ratio requirement on property generally located at 3239 South 46th Street.
Councilman Christensen?
Mr. Chair, at the request of members of the City Council, I'm going to, in a moment, move that we delay this for one week, but people who are here today to speak on this can speak today, and this is being, so I'm gonna move this to be delayed for one week with public hearing and action.
Can we get a second?
Second. I will second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's take a vote on the motion to have, continue the public hearing for this week and next week, and which means I will hold off the vote for next week. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0.
Okay, since we're continuing the public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to testify on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Oh, wait a second. Was the applicant, the people who appealed this, did they, are they here?
They didn't come forward, but they have next week to do that, too.
All right. It is, I just thought that was...
Steve Hendrickson with the planning department. So technically, the appeal just means this now comes forward to you. So the applicant is Mr. Euler, and Mr. Euler is here. But the Bradleys did actually send an email saying they were unable to attend today. They sent forward their concerns, but their email did note that they couldn't come today. But since it's gonna be continued, they will be able to potentially testify in person next week.
Okay. Should we hear from the applicant?
Not if they don't want to.
If he's here, if he'd like to.
It'll all happen again next week.
It'll happen again, all right.
I'll wait until I hear what the appeal is about. The Planning Commission...
You wanna come on up? You gonna? Yeah.
Hello, I'm Philip Euler, and 5520 Grouse Place. I know one of the things that he said, why do we call it farmhouse? That's just a family name for the house since we bought it, because it's a 1928 Montgomery Ward kit home. Typically, those were put on farms, but that's the reason behind the name. Originally, we were going to move 3230 from Prairie Hill Place, that you approved back in December, to this property, but it looked like it would be better not to do that and to build a new home on the lot divided. And the staff report is behind it. I think it's a good addition to the neighborhood and will work well with Prairie Hill Place since it's right across the street from the entrance to that, to that. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and be back here next Monday, okay?
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Euler? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much. We look forward to seeing you next week.
Have a nice afternoon.
You too. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Item 5D is authorizing temporary waiver of requirements to barricade Piper Way and Beechcraft Road approved by Resolution A90903, in order to allow access during construction of road improvements in Holdridge Street.
Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Why don't we have Mr. Schaefer speak first, so that way he can do an introduction from the city side of things, and then we'll open it up to a public hearing if that's acceptable? Does that work for you? Perfect. Okay, Mr. Schaefer?
Thank you. I'm Thomas Schaefer, with Lincoln Transportation and Utilities Department. And what we have here, what you can see across here is Holdridge Street. This is the area of Sky Ranch Acres. Previously, when the annexation and development of the area to the south of Sky Ranch Acres came before council, there's a requirement that barricades go up to help separate some of the construction traffic from using these streets during that time. And most of that traffic would be coming up and going over and using 102nd. It also allows these folks to get onto Holdridge and to travel into town. We're going to be doing a project here at 104th and Holdridge. We've been working with the homeowners association out here, and it was decided that it was in the best interest of while we're doing this project, and they are unable to utilize this, that we would temporarily take down those barricades to allow both emergency access into the neighborhood and allow the neighbors to access out and get to points west of their neighborhood. The resolution also states that within 24 hours of that project being complete, the barricades go back up until it meets the original requirements to take down those barricades.
Any questions for Mr. Schaefer? Councilman Christensen?
Do you know how far we are from meeting the original requirements established in 2018?
I do not know that off the top of my head, but I believe there was, and I'm gonna look over my shoulder, 70-some?
Steve Hendrickson with the planning department. It was 75, but it had to be the number of occupied houses in the northern part of the Dominion, and the last time building safety looked at it was maybe in the mid-20s or so in that northern part. A lot of construction activity going on, so maybe within a year or so, we'll get that northern part to hit the 75. A lot of construction activity going on, so maybe within a year or so, we'll get that northern part to hit the seventy-five. But the last time we checked, it was not close.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Washington?
Mr. Schaefer, would you mind putting the map back up? Because I want to ask a couple specifics. So for the, I certainly understand the original agreement between the city and Sky Ranch. So when the folks who live in Sky Ranch are trying to come into, like, say, Lincoln, they want to go west on Holdridge, and they can't because of the construction, where, how do they, what's the most efficient path for them to get to Lincoln?
You would come down here to, oh, boy, Crescent Moon Shoreline and up Hundred and Second to Holdridge, and then you would continue in.
Okay, so it really is that it's only that one section of Holdridge which is going to be closed?
Right, we will be working right at the intersection of Hundred and Fourth and Holdridge, improving that intersection.
And how long is that construction project scheduled to last?
We are hopeful to start around the first of June and be done by Thanksgiving, weather permitting and other unforeseen circumstances.
Any further questions? I just have three questions. So one of this allows for emergency vehicles to come in and service the neighborhood, correct?
Correct.
And this is temporary, which means that once the construction is done, the barricades will go back up?
Correct.
And can you speak a little bit about your work with the neighborhood and kind of their position?
So I was contacted by Ron Beaumaster, Joe Borer, and Jeff Seraphin. They indicated to me that they were assigned by the Homeowners Association to work on behalf of the Homeowners Association. We had back and forth on information, what could happen, what couldn't happen, what they would be. They took it back to the board and indicated to me that this was the acceptable answer to a majority of the homeowners association.
Perfect, thank you so much. Oh, Councilwoman Washington?
Could I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
And when you came to this solution, can you tell me which departments were involved in this conversation?
It was Lincoln Transportation Utilities and Lincoln Fire and Rescue.
Lincoln Fire and Rescue. And I see someone from Lincoln Fire and Rescue, I'm, all right, Chief Engler. Would you mind coming forward to answer a question or two?
Wait, I want to get the cameras back on.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon and welcome. Could you tell me a little bit about fire and rescue and your path? How you get in and out of this area? What you would need to do if the barricades stayed in place? And what you would need to do if the barricades, you know, are removed? So tell me both scenarios.
The typical path today to the subdivision is to go down Ninety-Eighth Street to Holdridge and then into the subdivision. With Holdridge being closed, the alternate route would be through the barricades, as was noted earlier. If the barricades were to remain in place, then our only other way is to go down, go back to O Street, go down to Hundred and Twelfth Street, and then take Hundred and Twelfth Street. That's not the optimal path for us because that's gravel. And we typically don't want to respond our apparatus on gravel. First of all, it slows things down. Second of all, our apparatus aren't built for gravel like they might be if we were in a rural setting. So it creates a little bit of danger, so it's going to slow things down. The difference between the proposed path through the neighborhood and the Hundred and Twelfth Street option is about one minute. So one minute in our business is pretty significant because we deal in seconds in that. I don't want to sound overly dramatic, but think about if you have to hold your breath for an additional minute or fire doubles in size every minute. So it can be significant. That is all if the closest engine company is in quarters. So what happens is, is any, we don't have anyone in the close proximity. So any other responding units, if that engine company is not available, are going to come from a longer, a longer way, and they're going to have to come out of that way. So that's going to be a little bit, it's going to create some difficulty for us.
Okay.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Don't go far. All right, anyone else like to provide comment on this? Please come on up.
So, Lenny, could we get the camera back up instead of the Elmo?
Excuse me?
Internal video for the broadcast.
We need somebody else up here?
They're fine, yeah.
He puts one up.
Okay, Dave Dobish from Twelve Twenty Two Beechcraft. I am here to object to twenty-one R-one-one-seven, which is to modify the special permit of seventeen-oh-twenty-two, the authorization of cut plan for Dominion at Stevens Creek to modify and remove the dead ends between Sky Ranch Acres and Dominion before the permitted time during construction of Hundred and Fourth and Holdridge, during the construction of the Hundred and Fourth and Holdridge Roundabout. This is to provide LFR access to Sky Ranch during the time, during this time. And this was first proposed in November of 2020. If you look at the documentation in the patch, you will notice that the plan to use Sky Ranch roads for Dominion access during construction was contentious. One document in particular is a certified engineer report by Breck Wilson, P.E., titled "Safety Concerns." This document laid out why it is a bad idea to have the roads in Sky Ranch open before most of the construction in Dominion is completed, not the least of which would be liabilities incurred by Dominion and the City of Lincoln. As such, it was determined to close the roads in Sky Ranch until construction was completed in most of Dominion. Removing the dead ends in Sky Ranch would renew those liabilities. LFR using the proposed route through the high-density developments of Waterford and Dominion to access the back end of Sky Ranch would endanger the multitude of people living in those two subdivisions. The residential route would be slow with multiple turns, and Dominion is a development of four-hundred-and-thirty-three units. Construction now is in full swing and will be going on for some time. Also, a new school is going to be started this summer, adding to the construction congestion. There is a high likelihood emergency response will be delayed with the construction blockage. The workers there are to build houses, not to provide a clear path for LFR to respond to emergencies. We have been having construction traffic trying to use Sky Ranch roads, even though they are dead-ended. If the dead ends are removed while Holdridge is partially closed, cement trucks will be using Sky Ranch roads from waiverly. And they have massive amounts of signage and flags installed in Sky Ranch telling these people they cannot use the roads, there's weight limits, et cetera, and they are not working. It's going to get way worse if the roads are open temporarily during that construction. Using Hundred and Twelfth Street as the LFR response route from the Highway Thirty-four substation is a high-speed, uses highway and county roads, has no construction blockage, no high-density housing. And this would be the fastest, safest, most reliable route for LFR to access Sky Ranch Acres while part of Holdridge is closed. I would like to mention, this route, taking Hundred and Twelfth is only a quarter of a mile out of the way that LFR uses to respond to emergencies in Sky Ranch now. During construction of the Hundred and Four Roundabout, Holdridge will be open to local traffic and emergency response from the Sky Ranch-Holdridge entrance to Hundred and Twelfth Street, giving residents and LFR easy access in and out of Sky Ranch. There are no reasons to eliminate the dead ends while Holdridge is partially closed that will put the, that were put in place to protect Sky Ranch and reduce liability for all. Please kill this resolution. And did the pictures work?
Yeah, we saw.
Okay, this is, I took a short walk through Dominion last Tuesday during the route that LFR is planning to use. The first one was cement trucks pouring foundations, which totally blocked the road. This is a construction worker backing a trailer into a...
Job site.
Backing a trailer into do construction work. And as you noticed, the road is completely blocked, you know, as well as, you know, construction workers kind of doing their things, blocking the road, doing what they need to do. So, you know, this is taking a chance by LFR to use these residential roads to access Sky Ranch Acres because there's a high probability that these will be blocked. And these, this will not result in a one-minute delay. This would be several minutes, if not, not even being able to access Sky Ranch Acres during an emergency. So I would, I would hope that you would vote to kill this resolution and have LFR take Hundred and Twelfth Street, even though they don't want to take a gravel road. Do I have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions? Councilwoman Washington?
In the Neighborhood Association, so Mr. Schaefer talked about talking to the Neighborhood Association, and I think we received a letter that said the Neighborhood Association voted in favor to open, to remove the barricades for this period of time. And I think, I think the vote was like twelve to seven. I'm curious if you...
It was, it was a lot closer than that.
Was it closer than?
It was very, it was very close. It was a very close vote. There were a lot of stipulations that were put into that vote that were voted on that did not make it into the resolution, that would have helped protect Sky Ranch Acres in the event that all these cement trucks started coming down and, you know, delayed response from LFR, et cetera, et cetera, that did not make it into the resolution. I'm thinking that as close as the vote was, and the way the resolution came down, I don't think it would pass the way it stands now.
All right, thank you.
I just had two questions for you.
Yes.
Can, I think you mentioned in your public comment what you thought would be like a more effective route. Can you please say what that effective route to get into Sky Ranch Acres would be for LFR?
They would be going down Highway Thirty-four, which, you know, the substation is right on Highway Thirty-four. They'd be going down Highway Thirty-four. They would go up Hundred and Twelfth, and then they would take a short jog back to Sky Ranch Acres. And like I say, it's only like a quarter mile out of the way from what LFR responds to Sky Ranch now.
And I think the second question I have is, the numbers that I was getting for the vote in the Homeowners Association was eighteen in favor and seven opposed. Does that sound correct?
It was closer than that.
Okay. Because I saw the eighteen in favor, seven opposed a couple of different times. But that doesn't sound accurate to you?
No.
No, okay. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this item?
Hello, my name is Gail Dobish. I'm his wife. I live at Tony Twelve Twenty Two Beechcraft also, I think. I'm here today to oppose twenty-one R-dash-one-seventeen. I'm an old nurse, guys. I have many safety concerns about LFR using the route that has been proposed in twenty-one R-one-seventeen. Ladies and gentlemen, if you have a chance to drive out there, please do. Construction on new houses is picking up again this spring with the nicer weather. The route that is proposed is at least seventy-five percent of the time blocked with equipment. I drove that route from the fire station to the dead ends of Piper and Beechcraft ten days ago. In my little Fiat, I ended up pulling to the curb at least three times to let other vehicles pass. Between Piper and Beechcraft, the road was totally blocked. I feel that LFR's response time is compromised using this route. If the road is blocked, if they need to slow down or wait for other vehicles, response time will be much longer. Having to turn around or back up is a real possibility. The only viable route LFR has to Sky Ranch Acres during the roundabout construction on One-O-Four is O Street to One-Twelfth back to Sky Ranch Acres. This route does have a short gravel road, but it is always open and passable. To open up the dead ends of Piper and Beechcraft is unnecessary and could contribute to a very unsafe situation. With one way in and one way out, there can be no confusion on the part of LFR or the nine-eleven dispatcher. This, to me, is the best solution. As a nurse, I'm used to doing risk assessments. The risk to safety is high if the roads are open and dead end removed. And I feel that there are questions unanswered as to liability. Thank you for a no vote. I also want to thank the mayor, city council, and everyone else in Lincoln involved with the COVID-nineteen response. Job well done, thanks again. Questions? Can I be done?
Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Oh, you are so welcome, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Schaefer or Director Engel, Engler?
Mr. Chair, I do for Mr. Schaefer. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Schaefer, thanks for coming up again. So we've had some testimony, both from residents of the community, and we've had a letter from the Neighborhood Association. We're tempor, this resolution would temporarily remove some barricades as in anticipation of maybe needing them for emergency use? Is there, are, what is the main reason we're doing this? Why are we removing the barricades?
At the request of the Homeowners Association.
At the request of the Homeowners Association. So this is not something that came from us? This is something that came from the neighborhood and asked us to do this?
Neighborhood had several concerns about things, and one of them was, when this construction's going on, what can we be do? What options do we have? We went through several options of one barricade down versus another barricade down versus blocking it at Holdridge instead to keep folks out of the neighborhood. And we went through a lot of different options with them, and this is what the neighborhood came up with.
So this is, this is the city's response to a request from the residents to provide them service during construction?
Correct.
Thank you, that was my question.
Any further questions for Mr. Schaefer? I'm so sorry. If I don't follow the rules for everyone, then it turns into a whole mess that we all have to figure out how to live through. So I'm so sorry. Is there anyone else that, does anyone on the council have any questions for Director Engler? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much. Sony, if we could please move on?
Could not vote on these items. Item five A, special permit four-five-zero-S, application of Madonna Rehabilitation Hospital to amend their campus signage. Plan for new signage to include electronic changeable copy signage with front yard setback reduction for signage of property generally located at five-four-zero-one South Street introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Christensen. Any discussion? Councilman Christensen?
Once more, this is another good thing.
Any further discussion? May we please have a roll call vote?
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried five-zero. Item five B, special permit two-one-zero-one-zero, application of Chadbur Construction LLC to allow for a community unit plan with build-through to develop two dwelling units with associated waivers on property generally located at five-one-zero-zero South Ninety-Eighth Street, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried five-zero. Motion carried 5-0. Item 5D is authorizing temporary waiver of requirement to barricade Piper Way and Beach Craft Road per v. Resolution A90903 in order to allow access during construction of road improvements at Holdridge Street, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Christensen. Any discussion? Councilwoman Washington?
I'm really glad that everyone wrote in who, who had comments on this. I really appreciate hearing from neighbors, both for and against this. But the Neighborhood Association took a vote and from their vice president and president, they attested that 18 people in the neighborhood voted for this and 7 against it. And this project was proposed by the Neighborhood Association. And it is impossible for me to go against the advice of our chief of, our, our LFR chief. And I will be supporting this resolution. It's a six-month period of time. And then the barricades will go back up and I trust that, you know, more signage and encouragement to the construction crews will keep the streets open and, and off of Sky Ranch's streets. I'm gonna support this project.
Thank you so much. Any further, anyone else have any other comments? Councilman Christensen?
I would agree with everything Councilwoman Washington just said. And I also would say that I have heard these kind of concerns about traffic over and over and over again over the last eight years and have never seen those concerns come to, to pass.
Any further comments or discussion? I think the last comment that I'll just throw in there is, you know, with this being a Northeast Lincoln and kind of a split vote on the Homeowners Association, it makes it hard for me to vote one way or the other because I know I'm gonna be disappointing a, a group. But I agree with Councilwoman Washington and Councilman Christensen that this would allow for further safety and this is something that LFR is asking for to protect the lives of folks in Northeast Lincoln and it's temporary. And there was association support, so that is why I will be voting in support of this. May we please have a roll call vote?
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. That ends our public hearing resolutions. We can move on to Section 6, which is Public Hearing Ordinance's second reading and related resolutions. Item 6A is text amendment 21001, request of Madonna Rehabilitation Hospital to amend Chapter 27.69 regarding signage regulations by amending Section 27.69.260 non-residential healthcare facilities to allow for electronic changeable copy signs and repealing Sections 27.69.260 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as heretofore existing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the council, I have two points. Tom Houston, 233 South 13th Street, Suite 1800, on behalf of really Madonna Rehabilitation Hospital, the applicant. The two points I want to make to is we tried to come up with a very narrow exception to the general rule that electronic changeable copy signs are not allowed in a residential zoning district. Madonna operates pursuant to a special permit as a non-residential healthcare facility in a residential district. So this restriction is a very narrow one that would permit, in limited circumstances, an electronic changeable copy sign. The other thing I wanted, point I wanted to make to is the planning department was very helpful throughout this process and I want to extend my thanks to both Steve Hendrickson and George Wusselhoff for their cooperation, getting this language finalized to allow this text amendment to come before you. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Houston? Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you. Of course, I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
I'm just curious, since we just passed on the earlier resolution allowing this, why did you feel a need for a change in code? Yeah, we'll start there.
Because generally the sign ordinance did not otherwise permit the electronic changeable copy sign to be approved in a residential zoning district. A, a, a non-residential healthcare facility is permitted in a residential district through a special permit. And the text amendment that we're, we're proposing, and that is contained in this ordinance change, would permit that special permit to also approve electronic sign, because otherwise we couldn't get here.
And when I went and looked at the code, it looked like in that section, it's also for private schools, private post-secondary schools.
Yeah, and I believe your staff report indicates that Pis High School, for example, operates pursuant to a special permit in a residential zoning district. And their special permit also permits them to have a similar electronic changeable copy sign. So this language that we're proposing is very similar to that proposed or contained in the code for educational facilities.
Okay, yeah. I did have one other question. I think wanted, I wanted to know, because it said non-residential healthcare facility, but it didn't mention in the changed language, the additional language, it didn't mention the school. And I wanted to know if that was specifically left out?
There's a separate section dealing with schools operating pursuant, and it's contained in Section 27.63, the special permit section, that allows the, the educational facilities and schools to operate in residential districts. So it's a separate section, but it's there. The, the, the text amendment that we're making is only applicable to the non-residential healthcare facilities.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Houston?
It's devil in the detail on this one. I think we have it right.
Seeing no further questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Item 6B is change of zone 05061D, application of Nebraska Horsemen's excuse me, and Protective Association to amend the Southwest Village Plan Unit Development by revising the site plan to allow for a casino, a hotel, an increase in the number of dwelling units, decreased commercial floor area, and allocate to square footage and dwellings among the different parcels of the property generally located at South First Street and West Denton Road, along with the related approving amendment number 3 to the Highway 77 in Warlick Boulevard, conditional annexation and zoning agreement between the City of Lincoln, Dial Highway 77 LLC, Waverly Development Company LLC, Southport Venture Company LLC, CDW Properties LLC, La Grande Excavating Inc., and Nebraska Horsemen's Development and Protective Association, Inc., to amend requirements for construction of infrastructure improvements required to serve the PUD specifically as it pertains to South First Street and West Denton Road.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Andrew Willis, 233 South 13th Street, on behalf of the applicant. The, the Southwest Village PUD was approved about 2005, so quite a while ago. Since that time, it, it was a kind of intended to be a mixed-use commercial development. Since that time, sort of the, the plans and the, the intent of the neighborhood, the, the PUD area has, has changed a little bit. Not much has happened out there. The, so the real impetus behind this PUD amendment would be the, the proposed development of a casino on the horse track property now that that's been approved under state law. In addition to that, as we were working through this amendment, we, we figured that we allow, this allowed us the opportunity to look at some of those other uses on the north side of, of West Denton as well. And really, so the overall amendment to the PUD includes really a reduction in overall commercial space, the increase in residential, a slight increase in hotel rooms. But, but then again, primarily we've got the, the casino that would be developed on the, on the south side of West Denton. Previously, the area was approved for about 1.3 million square feet of commercial. That'll be reduced to just under a million, about 980,000 square feet of commercial. And again, there'll be a, a increase in dwelling units that would be permitted and hotel rooms as well, going from about 410 dwelling units up to 700 and from 250 hotel rooms, about 650. The other thing that we did in, in this, in this proposed amendment is the, the areas, there's now multiple owners of these properties. So through private agreement, there was, it was sort of allocated out which uses went to which parcel. And now that would be part of the, of the actual PUD. It makes a lot more sense. It's a lot cleaner. It, it just kind of helps looking forward as far as where the uses are and what's, what's proposed. As far as this, there's a, we've requested a couple of, of waivers. There's a height waiver. It's 55 feet on the residential kind of standard with some of those apartments you've probably seen. And, and then as far as the casino itself, the hotel that's, that's part of the casino complex would be, we're requesting 100-foot. Currently on that property, there's already a height waiver for the grandstands of 70 feet. So it's, it's increased, but there's already been, there's already a waiver for the grandstands on that property. And then the ho, the casino itself, we've asked for a 50, 50-foot height limit. And that's really to have some screening on top of the building for the equipment. But again, that would be a 50 feet over the otherwise 40 feet. The other waiver that we're being requested is on signage. On that casino property, with the, with the, you know, fringe on two arterials, there's a multiple, there'd be multiple freestanding signs allowed. What really the request is, there's the signage plan that's included as part of the PUD. And it would really, I guess, aggregate or combine what would, what's permitted into one larger freestanding sign on the casino property. So overall, it's the same square footage that would be otherwise allowed, but it's all gonna be put into, to one sign rather than up to four. And then, so that's kind of the, the primary waivers included. As far as the, I guess, the accompanying annexation agreement really addresses some of the traffic issues. So I can, I can wait to, I can talk about those or address them at the next, on the next point. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have for me at this time.
Are there any questions for Mr. Willis? Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have a, just two lines of questions.
Yes.
And I, you know, I, I think people are getting to know me, so you know, I, I probably have 18 questions. I'm gonna try and keep them to two. So first, the folks who live just west and north of this new development, obviously, some of them have been out there for decades before they, you know, and they have this now as a new neighbor. And I'm just curious, when you consolidate your signs into one sign, could you describe the height and the size of that consolidated sign? And really, what is its light impact on the neighbors?
Yes.
To the northwest? That's one question.
See if this helps. So the signage would really, I mean, it would be facing 77. And so it's 35 feet. And again, it'd be 500 square feet of signage and only 320 of that would be electronic changeable copy. Again, that's what would be permitted on that property anyway. So I, I guess I would say that the goal is, I mean, really to not affect them. It's pointed to, it's really directed at 77. And that's where it would be, I mean, I guess the, the impact or, or the, the visual would be aimed in that direction.
So when you're looking at the sign from there, like from this perspective, where is Warlick? Where is 77?
Uh, okay, so West Denton Road, right here. South First Street would be right here, so, you know, 77, I guess, right here.
Alright, thank you.
So yeah, the residential would be on that side.
On that side, alright. My second question has to do with the, the barns, so southwest of the track. So I see all the barns are outlined there. And I am curious about water quality there in that creek on the south side of the property. And how do you intend to manage manure?
I, I will say that the barns will be addressed in a later, nothing will be built under, currently there'll have to be a, a separate plat that'll come before you. So as of now, that will be a, I guess, to be, to be addressed at a later time. Is that a fair enough answer?
That's a fair enough answer. I just, I would, this is a heads up. I'm gonna be paying attention to water quality issues.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You've mentioned 100-foot waiver. Was that for signage? Did I?
No, it's the hotel piece of this, and let me see if I have a good image for you. Let me try to find a good image here. So again, the, you know, we're looking sort of West Denton Road right here. The, the casino proper, the main casino, and then there's the, the hotel. It's really between the casino and the racetrack. And that would be, the, the request for 100 feet would be on that portion, the hotel. The casino itself is really under the, I mean, it's, it's this, you can, I guess you can see that, you know, in, in that circular area, that's really screening for mechanical. That would be the 50-foot waiver on the casino. So it's really set back from the edge of the casino anyway, but the 100 feet would be on that hotel.
Great. That helps a lot, the visual. My second question was, did you want to go ahead and talk about traffic?
Yeah, I would be glad to.
Do you mind?
Nope, not at all.
That would be fun.
So the, a traffic study was done, and there was one done in 2005, but there is a new traffic study done based on the change in uses, overall, the, kind of what's going on. And, and so again, with, with the reduction in commercial, even though there's a casino going in, with the reduction of commercial space, it really kind of anticipate a, a reduction or not a massive, a major traffic impact. The major traffic, let me see if I can. So really, the, the traffic that'll be coming in will, is really anticipated, again, without, that there will not be a lot of traffic on West Denton Road. It'll come from 77 and then, so that's, you know, coming from, from 77. And then really on South, South First Street. It's all directed to South First Street. So we would anticipate a lot of turning south onto South First Street to get into the casino because the main casino entrance would be on South First Street. There's a three-quarter access point right there on the, where, where there's a current on this blue flag court in the main interest of the casino. And then at the quarter mile down on South First Street, there'll be a full access roundabout. And so that would allow really two points of access there. The parking garage and a lot of the parking on site is, is, is right there in between them, but, so they can, so there's an entrance, really the main entrance would be at that, that first point, but then we have full access at the roundabout. Additionally, if you can see it on here, the, on West Denton Road, there will be a right-in, right-out. There's already been a deviation request approved for this, for this really kind of, it's, it's a, I think we were looking at this more of a safety, getting an, an extra access in there as well. That during construction will be a full access point because while, while South First Street's being constructed. So there will be access to this property from West Denton. But after, after South First Street is constructed, this will be, a, a median will be installed and it will be right-in, right-out only. So this would only be right-in, right-out permanently after, after South First Street is constructed. So, and again, really the, oh, and the, and the traffic signals will be activated. That, the, the traffic signals, which most of the equipment's already out there, those will be turned on. So that's part, when, when the, the signals will be warranted for, for enough traffic. But, but ultimately, again, we're thinking, the, what was previously anticipated with the, the commercial development, looked like four lanes of West Denton Road was planned. That's, through the new traffic study, shown that it's not warranted. So the, the goal would be really to leave that, at least for now, as two lanes in its current state, and really focus on West, on South First Street where, where the most of that traffic impact will come. And that's, so that's where really the primary construction and, and traffic improvements in the area.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
I guess the old, I guess, just to, to finish that, a couple other points. The, there will be the other improvements along West Denton Road. Let me see if I have a, I might switch images here. This one, this one will work. So again, we have South First Street right here and then Amaranth going north. So there will be a right turn northbound onto South Folsom Street. That will be constructed as, as part of the overall road improvements on West Denton. So there will be that right turn lane improvement constructed. And then eventually, again, in the later, when, when you're seeing barns and development to the south, eventually when, if South, when South Folsom Street is developed to the south, you'll have a southbound turn lane on West Denton constructed there as well. But again, that's, that's probably the, the main improvements warranted on, on Denton Road.
Any further questions for Councilman Shob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Willis. That map you had up would be nice if you would put that back up again. If we look at the whole dotted line for the planned unit development, we've spent quite a bit of time talking about the southern portion of that. Can we spend a little bit of time, can you share with me any more information about the northern portion? The, you mentioned in passing apartment buildings, but you didn't elaborate on any plans to develop that further.
The, I think that it's, maybe I would say unknown at this time, but yeah, the only real change in plan, so that, that area was, was previously approved for a mix of commercial and residential. And let me, I'm actually gonna switch up one more time here. If you take a look at this map, parcel three here is the one parcel in the, in the PUD amendment that would be, that's really been adjusted in the, in the anticipated use mixes to increase residential versus commercial. So commercial and residential are still allowed, but the, the thought is, of the owner of that parcel is that there'd be more multifamily developed there. Really, when this was originally approved, the PUD, I think there was some thought that this would, there would be some. this would, there'd be some big, big box development and some larger commercial, which just hasn't come to, hasn't come to pass. So there is still, again, 980,000 square feet of commercial that's under, that's approved under the use. Again, we probably anticipate that you'd see that. I don't, I don't know for sure, but you're, you know, along West Denton Road in what's still designated as the I-3 area, and then more multifamily up to the north. But again, there's no plans for any of that yet, or at least I don't know what exactly that will look like.
Thank you. That was, you answered the question. Thank you very much.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come and speak on this item?
Good afternoon, Lincoln City Council, Lynn McNally, L-Y-N-N-E, capital M-C, capital N-A-L-L-Y, 7055, 7055 South First Street, appearing today with Lance Morgan from Ho Chunk Incorporated. I just want to give you a little bit of background about us and about what our intentions are for this property. I have now moved back to Lincoln for the third time, and I added it up. I've lived here 27 years now, so I think this is officially my hometown. Lance and I both went to the University of Nebraska. We're both UNL graduates, and we are, with brief times going to school, we are lifelong Nebraskans. As I said, Lance actually lived here when he was at UNL and has lived in Winnebago ever since, except for the time when he was at school. My point in, in making this observation is that we were the architects of the campaign Keep the Money in Nebraska. That was not hyperbole. We believe in keeping the money in Nebraska, and we intend to do so. I live here. This is my community. So when this casino opens, this isn't the end of the road for me and I move on to the next thing. This is my home. So when we talk about building this project, it's not just about the new revenue for the state, it's not just about the new revenue for the city of Lincoln, it's about new jobs, it's about recirculating the revenue in the state. The money is not going to be going back to Las Vegas, it's not going to be paid out in a dividend to shareholders so that we don't maintain the property. Everything is going to go back into this project and back into the communities where we live. The reason that I want to make a point of telling you that Lance came down here is that I think you all know, he's a publicly recognized figure, but he took the time to come down here because that's how important this is to him. I, I'd like him to talk about some of the ideas that he's got for the facility itself about bringing Nebraska businesses as part of the business, and then we can also talk about what you had talked about, Councilman Schob, about the, the PUD portion to the north. We have information about that as well. Lance came down to talk to some property owners to the north specifically about what the plan is, and he also has personal relationships with a couple of the property owners up there. So we can address that, and then I can also address your barn question as well. So Lance, do you want to?
Yeah. Thank you, Lynn. My name's Lance Morgan, and my address is 521 Chief Little Priest Drive, Winnebago, Nebraska. We built our own town, so we've named, we gave them cool Indian names. If you ever get a chance, you should do that. The, I only want to, I only, I only want to say two things. One, I guess, well, first of all, I, I really wanted to come down and, and at least make an appearance here so you understood how important this was to us. But the two things I want to say, and then I'll answer any questions, is that I think that this facility in our mind, you know, the way Link, you know, Omaha's sort of the center of Omaha and their universe, and then Lincoln's sort of the center of Nebraska. And so I think that having a first-rate facility here will be a draw for, for the community and all of Nebraska, and it'll be something that'll really sort of perpetuate, you know, the notion that Lincoln is, is the capital of the state and that all the events that are held here are going to be a big deal, and it'll be just one more reason to come here, and, and, and we want to make sure that, that we do that right. The other thing that I want to mention that people would probably not know is the, the entire reason for our company's existence is, is to create an economy that's diversified away from gaming. You know, the tribe had the casino and it got crushed by competition from Iowa, the same thing that happened to the horse tracks, actually. And we took some of the money that we had made 25, six years ago and started Ho Chunk Inc. And our job is to take gaming money and reinvest it back into the community. That is our reason for existence. And every place that we have business activities, we, we don't just do one business there, we reinvest over and over again. And if you were to go to our neighborhood up in the South Sioux, Sioux City area, even Omaha, and we have done that over and over again, we're probably the largest developer in those areas. So I would commit that if we get this thing going and everything's rolling, that we will participate in the development of Lincoln across the board, and that's what we do. So those are my main comments.
Are there any further questions? I know that you said you wanted to speak on a couple of items first.
Yeah. The reason that we didn't put the barn construction in this portion of our zoning changes is because there are a couple of moving parts down in that southwest corner that we're trying to make some things happen that we think overall are, are going to help the project move forward. What we're planning to do is once those barns get built, we do have a permit for two wells down in that area. However, if we get to the point that we want to get to in probably six months, we'll be going ahead to do application to do, develop that South Folsom intersection down there, which means that we'll be dragging water and sewer down from West Denton Road down. So that will be developed down there. We are very used to hauling manure away. It's kind of what we do for a living. So, you know, we're accustomed to it back when we were running at State Fair Park. We're planning on removing it daily and hopefully retaining some of it. We're looking at buying some property nearby where we think it's going to be, continue to be farmed. So if we do that, it's very valuable as fertilizer, so we would be utilizing it for fertilizer on those crops. Foner Park actually sells their manure in Grand Island to a place that sells it for fertilizer. So we'll be very cognizant of that. As far as I know, we had very few issues at State Fair Park about water quality, and it was tested fairly regularly. There were, there were some water issues, but it was more related to the aging infrastructure under State Fair Park than it was about any effluence or anything like that. I also know that Mark Whitehead is planning on building a U-stop on the far northeast corner of the PUD, and I, and I, I know he's already got plans underway for that. And they are, we have spoken verbally with some of the property owners, and they are going to make some changes in what they're looking for for goals. We're going to be in very desperate need of housing of some kind. There are going to be a ton of employees there, and I asked several large-scale developers, you know, what were the closest apartment buildings or condos in the area, and the closest they could think of was Ruskin Place? That's far. So we're really hoping that they'll develop the north part of the PUD so that we've got multifamily housing so that people have places to live, so that they can go to work and, and live in the neighborhood and, and do that kind of thing. I do know that Mark intended his U-stop to be an expanded convenience store, meaning he was going to provide grocery items, so that would be very helpful in the area as well. And then I do know of a couple of food service businesses that are interested on that north side also. So we're hoping that, that it's more completely developed and have kind of a mini-community in that area. I think that would be very helpful. I've deliberately reached out to almost all the property owners in the area to try and see if they had any concerns. We had a highly-publicized community meeting that Lance drove down for, and no one came, and he felt bad, so he decided to do his presentation to some of the people who were already patronizing Lincoln racecourse. They were very polite about it.
I brought a beer.
But, you know, we're, we're very cognizant of the fact that there might be concerns from, from people in the neighborhood and what kind of neighbors we're going to be. And we have a strong desire to be good neighbors, not only to the immediate neighborhood, but to the community of Lincoln at large. So very high priority for us.
Any further questions? Seeing none? Thank you both so much for coming on Testifying and providing a lot of great information.
Thank you.
I do have one final question. Are you going to hang around for a little bit?
I will.
Okay.
Okay.
Cool. All right, can we move on to the next item, please?
That concludes our public hearing for ordinances, result, excuse me, ordinances and related resolutions. We can move on to Section 7, which is ordinances, third reading, and related resolutions. 7A is approving the Revolution Wraps redevelopment agreement between 401 Investment Group LLC and the City of Lincoln relating to the redevelopment of property generally located at North 19th and Cornosker Highway, introduced by Raybold.
In Councilwoman's absence, I will introduce.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Washington, seconded by Councilwoman Christensen. Any discussion? Seeing none, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 7B is amending the fiscal year 2021 CIP to authorize an appropriate $426,000 TIF funds for the Revolution Wraps redevelopment agreement introduced by Ward, or Washington, excuse me.
So moved, Washington.
Second. Moved by Washington, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Seeing none, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Ward?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Item 7C is authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the Revolution Wraps redevelopment project in an amount not to exceed $426,000, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Washington, seconded by Ward. Any discussion? Councilman Christensen?
No, I think we're good.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can we please do a roll call vote?
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0. Section 8 resolutions, first reading is Items 8A and 8B. Pending list is Items 9A through 9C.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say remember the golden rule, and I move adjournment.
Second.
Moved by Christensen, seconded by Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, can we please do a roll call vote?
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0.